...for thousands of people across the state and nation. Motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas the campaigns for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month 2023 consist of motorists awareness of motorcycles, ride sober or get pulled over, rider safety, and share the road. These campaigns assist riders and motorists in a reduction of motorcycle risks, injuries, and fatalities. It is a responsibility of whomever, whoever, whomever puts themselves behind the wheel to have the same respect for a motorcycle as for any vehicle that they share the road with. Whereas state and motorcycle organizations across the country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorcyclist awareness and safely sharing the road with motorcycles and remind riders to make themselves more visible to others. And whereas the Killenly Town Council wishes to promote the safety campaign of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in their effort to ensure the safety and well-being of all. Whereas all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways throughout the town of Killenly, Wyndham County, and the state of Connecticut to follow the rules of the roads so that all citizens will remain safe. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize the month of May 2023 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and urge all motorists to join in this effort to keep our roadway safe. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this ninth day of May 2023. And Ms. Wakefield, would you like to read the next one?
A proclamation recognizing the month of May 2023 as the National Bicycle Safety Month. And I will like to also recognize our Killenly Parks and Rec for instituting our first bike rodeo, the promote bicycle safety and for us, our kids. And so it's, it's one of our newest people that we put on the, on that board that instituted this and ran with it. And I'm very grateful that our constabulary worked with them to, to make it happen. So, so we're going to become a really bike-forward town pretty soon. So, so proclamation recognizing the month of May as National Bike Safety Month. Whereas National Bike Safety Month was established in 1956 and is a chance to showcase the many benefits of bicycling. The bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally friendly form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment. And whereas throughout the month of May, bicycle use increases with good weather, many enjoy experiencing bicycling through educational programs, races, community charity events, and by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas the town of Killenly roadways and trailways attract bicyclists each year, creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, quality of life, and growing the economy. And whereas education of bicyclists and motorists regarding the safe operation of bicycles and the importance to ensure the safety of all travelers, bicycle safety includes proper functioning of the bicycle, a helmet that fits correctly, and wearing bright and reflective colors, riding in the rightmost lane when no defined bike lane is available, obeying traffic signals, lights, and lane markings, and being always visible. And whereas bicycle safety education is important to reduce collisions, injuries, and improve health and safety for everyone on the roadway. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize May 2023 as National Bike Safety Month and encourage participants to observe all safety measures, including wearing a helmet and obeying traffic laws. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is seven, unfitness business for town meeting action, and we have none this evening, so we'll move on to item eight, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Glorio, do we have anything submitted?
We did not receive any.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Ed Grandelsky, Upper Maple Street, District Number Two. As a result of the voting this morning, I would like to request the town council present a resolution to the town manager to accurately locate the 75-foot demarcation line that is supposed to isolate people from doing whatever they're doing so not to interrupt the voting. This is the second time major issues I've, I've been involved with, I don't know why, it's me. The last time we were voting for the Westfield Avenue School, there was no 75-foot mark anywhere. There were five union carpenters and I don't know how many union ironworkers in front of the library doors promoting the vote. Today, the 75-foot marker was 500-plus feet away. It's, it was down by the road, down at the main drive, you know, not at Route 12, but way outside of the area. And, I mean, we gotta be reasonable. Going back to the, when you start talking to the, when I go in and engage the moderator, we don't know where that 75-foot line is in both instances. I couldn't move the 75-foot marker today because that's against the rules. You have to have someone do it. We have to call the highway superintendent to come up and move the marker. That's not a good use of his time. So if we had a permanent mark somewhere with the blessing of, I mean, the town manager can work with the registrars, the Board of Education, whoever it is, the, the library, so that we have some kind of marker out there so that the people who are putting the notices up know where to put it. You know, just, maybe it's, maybe I'm overreacting, but it's, we, we gotta do the right thing. And then afterwards, I'm in a conversation, I'm hearing there was some, someone who voted who didn't like the signage, the school signage that was within the 75-foot area, but it was only related to school issues, it wasn't related to the vote, and he was trying to make an issue of that. So I don't want to have any problems with voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, having gone to collect food for the food pantry collection, I did notice those signs, and unfortunately, Nurse Appreciation Week and Teacher Appreciation Week actually landed, and they put those, that's the signage that was out there. It probably could have been put on the other side of the walkway, but it was put where it was put, and I'm sure it was probably strategically put there, but if anybody was voting, hopefully they're educated more on the issues and not just going to be moved by motions, hopefully, so.
Thank you. I know at the, at the high school, it was the same thing when I walked up there. It was Nurses Appreciation, Teacher Appreciation, those signs, and they were along the sidewalk going into the polling location. And I agree, I mean, I have no problem with the signs being there, possibly put them on the other side where it's not so much of a distraction for people who are going in to vote. And in regards to Mr. Grandelsky's comments as well, I've seen issues over past municipal elections where I've seen signs that were slightly infringing on the 75 feet at the high school, and I've seen candidates for different positions who were lingering around the entryway to the high school, talking to people as they were coming in. So that is something we always have to make any candidates who are running for office aware of, that when it comes time for polling, you can't be within that 75 feet, you have to stay outside of it.
And if I may, I was not aware that there was an issue with the 75-foot sign for today, for today at all. I'll work with the registrars, and if it, you know, if it's a matter of putting a paint line on the ground, I'll work with highway to make sure, I don't know who they had go up and set, set those signs out this past week, so, I mean, I have no problem with, you know, you know, identifying a specific spot, but I wasn't aware. Had I known, I would have addressed that way sooner, so I apologize.
And I'm sure, I'm sure, Mary, it's probably the fact that it's a parking lot. The kids are coming, that's where the kids park, so it's, it's hard to, you just can't just put a sign somewhere.
Yeah, I know with the high school, the way the 75 feet is at the back of the school, I had actually put tape marks on the curbing where the 75 feet mark was at the last municipal election, just that way, so everybody could be aware of it. And it really doesn't get into the parking lot there. It's basically where the driveway is along the sidewalk between the parking space, the parking lot itself and the sidewalk, and it comes onto one of those two islands about a foot and a half, but it doesn't get into any of the parking spaces.
Yeah, so it's a matter of, if I need to work with the highway director to just put a permanent marking there, so that way there's the ongoing, when they, when the signs get placed, they know that's the official location. I can work with the registrars to confirm the exact, because it is the registrar's responsibility. They control the polling locations, not, not the town manager, not the superintendent, that is controlled by the registrars, so I would have to work with them to identify exactly for each polling location where that marking specifically is.
It was interesting, because I had a discussion with Matt yesterday about this. And I'm saying, you are the resort that puts this out. I don't want to call you at the last minute, you know, whatever it is that you, but it's your responsibility to do this, and I'm kind of calling him this one, I says, you know, we talked about yesterday, we have an issue up at the high school. But it's just that if we have a permanent marking, like most of our highway guys who ever went there, they don't even live in town, they don't vote here. So a lot of them have, they're not part of the election cycle, so if there's a marker that...
And we've also had some new ones coming in, so they may, the newer ones that don't typically set this up may have been the ones up there doing it, so.
Keep it clean, and then it's there, so.
Yep, not a problem.
But, like, you know, I got all the things to do. I understand, and I don't want to, but we gotta, and the poll workers couldn't move it, it was too heavy, because they went down to try to move it.
Yeah, so I'll just work with trying to come up with that.
But again, it was weird.
Then, then again, we had a discussion, it was at the registrar's office this morning, it's like, yeah, but it's Board of Ed property, so it gets to be a lot of things, it's not just, if it was the library, no problem, town manager and registrars, but we also got to deal with the Board of Education and...
I can work through it.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I'm just...
Any more comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up, item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to item 11A, reports from liaisons. I do not see a Board of Education liaison, so we will move on to 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
So this will probably be my very last report. I ended up in a tie for the sixth position on the borough, and I gave it, I seeded to Tom, because he's been a longtime borough representative, and, you know, I know he's involved in town, and he knows what's going on, so, and I've got plenty of stuff to do other than the borough. I, I enjoyed my time with the borough. There's probably going to be some real rough roads, rough seas coming. I don't know who they're going to put forward as their next liaison, but the borough, the borough board has basically had a total overturn, and from what I understand, the borough attorney will be there to address some of the conflict of interest statements that have come out multiple times in the last month or so, to help clarify for our newer members what exactly constitutes a conflict of interest and what doesn't. Being the person that I am, I plan on continuing to be a fully involved member of the borough, and I'll probably make a few meetings, but I've left it in their, their lap to find their own borough representative, so.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, next item up is 12A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports, summary report on general fund appropriations for town government. Can I get a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion. Mr. Grandelsky.
What is the status of the audit?
The auditors were out this week. They are be wrapping up audit and presenting us with draft audit statements next week, so we should be issuing, have a final audit issued by the end of May. It will then, will be coming to the town council for presentation at your June meeting.
Can we light a fire on the entity that is responsible for the delay?
So our finance director has been working closely with trying to enact pre-audit steps to get to reconciliation sooner, to be able to provide documents to our auditors. I will say the last month or so of delay really has been a twofold, not just that, but also the auditors have been, we got well past our window of when they had us scheduled, and they got tied up in other audits. And so, you know, when you don't meet your window, you get put to the bottom of the pile, and that's what happened. So they, you know, have been completely transparent on that, and so that has been also added to the delay. So if we can get some of those pre-audit steps completed earlier and then start getting reconciled information to our auditors more timely, then this will improve. So our finance director is trying to work with the business office at the school.
Is there, being it gets so late in the season, we're almost done with the...
Another fiscal year.
We're almost done with this year, and we don't have the audit done for last year. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I mean, it's...
No, it's troubling, and as a former, you know, this, having held that role and having to prepare for an audit and, and get through an audit cycle, you know, ideally, we want to be issuing in December. And we went through a period of time that, that there were delays, and we, we got off of that schedule with our auditors. This year has been very exasperated in that, and so we definitely don't want to repeat this for next year. But I will say categorically, I've told this to other communities that have run into the same scenario, you were, where you're on a delay, a long-term delayed extension, that doesn't get changed in one year. Your auditors have you slated in a schedule, because they know when all the other ones are actually going to be ready. They're not going to schedule us time to be out here in October, when historically, we're not ready until January. And that's just the reality of it. It takes consistency on our part for them to pull us earlier than that. So, you know, definitely, we should be able to get it issued way earlier next year, hopefully by the end of January or February at the latest, which is still an extension time period, but we are, our goal is to get back to issuing by December, you know. Killenly used to issue by December, we should be able to get back there. So our finance director on the town side is trying to, you know, coming from the municipal audit world, this is what she did for, you know, quite a long period of time. She knows what the auditors need when they come in and what they need to have reconciled, so she's created her audit list as though she were an independent auditor, and she's trying to work with scheduling out what that reconciliation timeline, so that way we can get that information in, in a, in a sooner fashion.
How do, do the bond agencies look at this as a negative?
Yeah, so we've had a lot of conversations with our, with our consultants on that and with our bond, with our bond attorneys, and honestly, so the state has, the state pension side has also created some delays around towns issuing their audits, because they haven't had that piece completed in a timely manner as well. And so really, unless we're more than a year behind in issuing the audit, which meant we would have to be beyond December of 2023, then that's when we run into an issue with the credit rating agencies. At this point, we've been fully transparent with our credit rating agency, we're getting ready to go into a debt issuance cycle, they are waiting for the drafts for us to be able to have our credit rating call, they haven't expressed concerns over that, we've articulated what the delay has been, and there hasn't been an issue. That being said, if we were chronic, you know, if this continues year after year, then, you know, that's going to be a, that's going to be a conversation with the credit rating agency. But as it stands right now, we don't have, we're not in jeopardy of any concerns at the credit rating agency at this point in time, so.
But we've been consistently doing it later and later and later, and I don't know how to light a fire under the Board of Ed. They got to get their act together. I, I, that's where the biggest, now, I don't want to put them under the, shove them under the bus, but they're the problem.
And, and no, it actually is not the Board of Ed, it would be the administration. It's not the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed oversees the administration, the administration is supposed to oversee the schools, and the administrators are supposed to oversee teachers, and the teachers are supposed to oversee students, and it's not happening. Our district's in crisis, period.
We, somehow we got to get that point across.
We're, we're trying to work through it.
It's making us look bad. I'm, I'm getting tired of going out of town, and it, it was nice, people thought I lived in Bayville. All of a sudden, now, they know it's Killenly. I don't need that grief. I mean, it's all in, in jest, a lot of it is what's going on, but still, it, it doesn't give us a good image, so that's...
All right, so we're back to the summary report on general fund appropriations. Any comments regarding that? Ms. Murphy.
I just had a couple of questions, Mary, on revenues. Interest income is quite high, could you explain that?
So we were able to, so we do a CD laddering program, and we were able to move some of those investments into higher interest rates, so we're able to obtain more in interest rates on that. That will might, so at the end of the year, sometimes that gets adjusted, because we have to sometimes recognize market value, so if market on those dips, that will ultimately adjust lower. But right now, we've been able to manage those interest rates. So that's largely due to a CD laddering program that we put in place quite some time ago.
Terrific. Expenditures, law enforcement, contractual services, could you explain that low number for me?
The low number?
Five percent, yep.
Yes, so that is because the state, with the resident state trooper contract, they don't send the invoices, they don't invoice us for the entire year until June, the middle of June, so that whole budget essentially gets expended in June.
Okay, thank you. And then one last one, special reserves and programs, only collect 42% contractual services, is that similar, or?
So that one, we, that is where we have several of our reserve commitments, where we transfer money directly into the reserves. I'd have to look at the, for the detail, but also includes our contingency. So I believe that we have transferred all of the dedicated amounts into the reserves, there may be one that hasn't transferred as of yet, and then the rest is what might be residual in our contingency account that we have not expended, but that we would look to expend on smaller items over the next month or so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Mr. Grandelsky.
So overall, we're, we're in good shape for this year, there's no, we're going to...
Yes, so our expenditures have been tracking, you know, pretty, overall, pretty close to budget and on, on point percentage-wise throughout this time period. We're not really, you know, we don't expect to exceed our budgets, we may have some departments that will have exceedances, that we will have transfers at the year end during our normal year-end transfer that we do in September, and that's really the, the normal year-end closeout process is what we're into at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item is 12B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to accept the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Cattula. Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 13A, correspondence communications, town manager's report. Ms. Glorio, if you could go over this, please.
Yeah, so the first item I have on there is just the year-end information that we received from Access Agency, the cold winter, overnight shelter. This is, the town does assist in funding this overnight shelter, and it has provided, you know, opportunities for those that otherwise don't have sheltering opportunity. So they had a total of 56 unduplicated adults that they provided shelter through, shelter to through the, through this past winter, and they were averaging nine to 10 individuals per night, so, and that was, you know, so this cold, this cold weather overnight sheltering has been in place for probably about three years now. So these are about the same numbers that they were having before COVID. They had to do some restrictions during COVID, and they were only really able to house about six guests overnight, and now they're kind of back to their normal swing, so, and I will say, since having this as an opportunity, you know, prior to this, we were really faced with individuals that were coming in, you know, right before we were closing town hall, you know, unsure of what they were going to do, and really struggling to find shelter. This has been a fantastic resource for that. The next section, I gave a list of, the tentative list of roads that are planned for construction for this upcoming construction cycle. So there's a, quite the laundry list of roads all over town that we're going to be working on and the different applications. We have everything from chip seal and crack seal all the way to repaving. So there's a, a whole range of applications and level of investment in that. Again, this is based on the bond balance appropriation that was done for roads, so we're working through this. I just remind everyone that, you know, this is still subject to change. Weather impacts the ability to do some of these road applications, and so if we have a very wet summer, that may push some of these out, just because they simply can't get the, they get that completed. Also, it can still change as if a road becomes more severely impacted than what we currently have, we may decide to shift and change a different, and change out a road just due to current circumstances. So just know that those, they may change, but this is currently what's slated. Our crews are currently working on the drainage work that needs to be done on these various roads to be prepared, and there is a couple of roads that our, our crew is going to be doing themselves. So there is a couple on that list that we will be managing the repaving ourselves. Next, I gave you updates on three different bills that are before legislation right now that will have significant impacts on municipalities, the first one being the change in valuation of motor vehicles. So that legislation passed last year with an effective date of October fir, the grand list of October 1st of 2023. When that legislation was passed last year, it was, OPM had only evaluated the impact on six towns out of 169. So they had absolutely no idea what the impact was going to be, and OPM made the broad statement that there's not going to be, no towns are really going to have a significant impact on this. We've been pushing back on that statement all this time. OPM ran, and I included that in your, in your packet, ran a new list for just the impact... OPM ran, and I included that in your, in your packet, ran a new list for just the impacts of the, of the grand list on the motor vehicle shifting. So, they have changed the legis, the proposed legislation does change and shift of original legislation, moved commercial vehicles that are off of the motor vehicle list and into personal property tax declarations, which would have been a complete nightmare because we get the report from DMV as to who's got a commercial vehicle and what the vehicle is. When it goes to personal property, people have to self-declare that. That is challenging. So, taking our existing grand list and not moving those commercials off, they did an evaluation on that, and as you can see from the list that I provided, and this is what the list looks like, you can see every single municipality has a loss. Everyone categorically across the state has a loss. And this is based on the October 1st of 2022 grand lists. So, for Killingley, if we just look at Killingley, we are losing, now, this is also, so we have a number of vehicles on our grand list for motor vehicle is a little over 17,000. Of that, 2,000, they couldn't identify. They didn't have, they had missing information, so they couldn't value that one. So, you know, you have a good chunk of our grand list that hasn't been valued, it hasn't been figured into these factors yet. It are, or it's showing right now that we would have a $12 million loss in our assessments, and that is going to equate, based on the current year mill rate, of a .25 mill increase, a quarter of a mill increase. And I've been saying since the start of this legislation proposal that this is not a tax savings to anyone. This is a tax shift to our real estate and our businesses. That's who picks up the tab on this. And, and we've been pushing for a full economic impact modeling by the state on this because this is going to impact our rents. Our rents are going to go up because it's going to shift to the property owner, and the property owner is going to increase rents, and it's going to make our rents even more unaffordable than what they already are, which is going to squeeze even more people out of the market for being able to have sustainable housing. So, this has much broader impacts than just what people are receiving in their motor vehicle tax bill on July 1st. And it's really, it's really just shifting the burden. So, the legislation that's being contemplated right now, or proposed right now, has a one-year delay. So, we've heard very loud and clear from the software vendors that program our assessment systems, that they, they're not ready to roll this out. They don't have the programming done. So, we're in the middle of revaluation. The governor wants us to implement it on October 1st. They don't have, they don't have the programming figured out, and they would have to upload those upgrades to 169 towns and train everybody on that and verify the information on all 169 towns. That's a pretty mammoth feat to happen in under five months. So, there's a lot of push. It sounds like our legislators are hearing this, and they're agreeing with it, but there's a lot of push from the governor's office that he wants it in, he wants it effective for October 1st. So, we're hopeful that, I know Cost and CCM has been having a lot of conversations with the governor's office, trying to, at a bare minimum, push the one-year delay, so that way, everybody can get their arms wrapped around this. We've been pushing for an economic study of this, so the legislature can really understand what this impact really is. So, I wanted to give you that update, and I just had a CCM legislative update today. It sounds like there, there is maybe a little bit of movement, but not much. So, I encourage everyone that if you have any opportunity to reach out to all of our legislative delegates to advocate for the current legislation that's before them to delay it for a year, I would, I would recommend everyone reaching out, because the more voices we can add, the better. But that one is very challenging.
I have a question on that. Do you know what six towns they initially looked at? Because I'd be curious to look to see if it was a decrease on those six towns that they projected it wouldn't be.
Yeah, so I do, and I, I can't remember the six that I have, that they had done, but there was like one that was, they claimed that they did one from every region, but the one that they claimed they did from eastern Connecticut was like really on the fringe of, like barely, and when, nobody would have counted it as Connecticut. So, and it was a small town. So, I can get you what that was. And at the time, they were using October 1st of 2021 data, and so they weren't reflecting a lot of the increases that we saw on the motor vehicle.
Yeah.
And so, they weren't using current information on that. So, that, I can get you that, though, but it was
Yeah, if you could.
Kind of six random towns, and I think only one of them had a small loss, and all the other three were like kind of dead even. And so, now categorically, everyone across the board has an increase on their mill rates because of the decrease in motor vehicle based on that new, and that number will likely, would likely change based on the percentage that they weren't able, that they weren't able to determine the information on.
I mean, the only good thing might be because our grand list has grown so exponentially in the last five years, it might offset, but
But in a given year.
We're still, we're still going to lose, we're still going to lose $12 million.
Right. It's in a given year, we don't usually increase by quite that much, so it would be a hit to our mill rate. The other two that I gave you the information on is with regards to delinquent property taxes. They want to change the interest rate, and it's, so currently by statute, we charge an 18% per annum, so that's an annual tax rate, so it's at 1.5% per month. They want to reduce it to 12%. So, again, number one, we would have to do reprogramming of our systems in order to calculate and apply that correctly across the board. It also means we have to carry two interest rates because the current, current legislation that's being proposed has it effective as of July, as of October 1st of 2023. So, those that have back taxes prior to that are still under the 18%. Those that are, become delinquent after that is 12%, so you have to run two separate calculations through that system for the duration. So, that's, that's a challenge, and it's a cost. Municipalities are going to pay for that implementation. That's not being paid for by the state. Subsequently, it also, it reduces our collection ability. So, what happens to that, and what is, why do we care about that? When we do our, when we do our budget, we apply a collection rate to our grand list, right? If we're collecting less, that means that collection rate is reduced. And I believe I put a calculation here. So, if the, if the collection rate on the budget is reduced even by 1% from 96.5 to 95.5, that increases the mill rate by, by .29, almost a third of a mill, by that 1%. So, if you reduce your interest rate, people are less motivated to pay, and so they will go longer. Another bill that they have out is to prohibit WPCAs in towns from going through foreclosure, tax sale, or any of those enforcement actions on unpaid sewer assessments until they reach $4,000. So, essentially, in the town of Killingley, somebody could walk away from their sewer user fee and assessments that are under $4,000. So, for a tax, for a user rate in Killingley, for a residential, it's eight years that they could go without paying before we can do anything about it. That's unfair to every other sewer user rate individual that's paying, because they're the ones picking up that cost, where while the interest rate for back taxes, the impact of that is spread over the entire tax base, to our user impact, that's, that's concentrated on just those sewer users, right? So, that is also very detrimental. It's, we're all, all of us are, all of us, I say all of us being the other municipal leaders across the state are all very, just surprised, I guess, I don't even want to say surprised, but dismayed that our legislature is taking such punitive steps towards the municipalities and really trying to restrict in our abilities to collect and our abilities to generate our, the revenue and impacting the rates in the way that they are. So, those are the three. I also gave you a small update on early voting legislation. They are looking at voting on a bill that would require a 14-day early voting period for general elections. They have changed it, the 14th, they're looking now for primaries, it to be a 10-day, or four-day, eight-day? What is it, eight days? Yeah, eight days for primaries, and then they have another four-day, for special elections. It's not going to be applicable to municipal referendum questions, municipal referendums, that we wouldn't be subject, like our budget wouldn't be subject to an early voting period. But they're still working out some details on that. So, I'm trying to kind of keep my ears open on that. It looks like the implementation of that wouldn't be until next November, so it wouldn't impact the upcoming elections. But, and we're still trying to determine whether or not the state will fund the additional costs to the municipality. So, that's kind of still fluid, and we never know where that's going to go.
So, I have a question. Do you know what the state charges interest for any taxes that are due to the state? Have they increased their interest rate?
For income tax?
Yes.
For their state income tax? I believe it's 18% still on the state income tax.
Of course it is.
And I don't know that they've, that they've, that they're proposing a change on that.
Of course not.
Can you, can you charge a transaction fee to kind of make up some of the 18% to 12% difference, like?
No.
No?
We're not, if this, if it's not within the state statute, we can't, we do charge a transactional fee. We are allowed to charge a transactional fee if somebody does the transaction online. So, we are allowed to pass through the 3% or 2.9%
Yeah.
For the online, third-party merchant transactional fee. We are allowed to do that, but no, we would not be able to charge an additional fee.
No processing fee.
No, we're not allowed to charge that.
Really?
Yes.
It's, the state overreach is just getting really, 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 really ridiculous at this point.
Mary, have we heard anything more on the, what is it? The fair share or the work-liver-ride? Anything on those two?
The transportation-oriented development. So, there is still a bill kicking around with regards to that. I can get you the additional information on it and the updated status of where that one is at this point in time, but I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Because if either of those two passes, it's going to be massively detrimental to municipalities, too. Either one.
So, I haven't seen the fair share piece, but there is a transit-oriented development one that may be impactful to us with regards to grant funding and, you know, having to have some transit component tied to it. So, that one, I don't know if it's going to be hugely impactful to the town, but that's the one that was most, that was highlighted a little bit during today's meeting. So, I'll have to go back and look, and I'll give you the update on the other one. Okay?
So, what the state is basically doing, the people who are not doing, paying the fair share, they're giving them an additional break. I think that's just, so we're going out of our way to collect all this stuff, and now they're making it harder, and we can't even get as much, and it's even tougher.
Welcome to the United States.
I was going to say, the mortgages now. I mean, on a national level, they want to subsidize people with good credit. Yeah, so I don't know if it passed yet. Well, it didn't execute, I don't know if it went into effect. So, I'll see it next month. But, I mean, that's not fair either. It's complete overreach.
Ms. Clorio, did you have any more on your report?
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 14, unfinished business for town council action, and we have none, so we'll move on to item 15A, new business consideration and action on a resolution of the use of federal fiscal year 2022 state homeland security grant funding and custodial ownership of regional assets in DEMHS Region 4. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Ms. Clorio, could you go over this, please?
So, this is an annual MOU that we have to enter into with Region DEMUS 4. The town of Killingley has been a host community for several Region 4 DEMUS assets. We have a light tower that's used and, that we, that we are the host community for, one of the electronic messaging boards, two traffic control trailers, and one 40-foot Conex box for equipment storage. As a host community, we are allowed to utilize those assets. We're currently utilizing one of them over by Owen Bell, the message board, with regards to that signage. And all of the repairs to it are funded by DEMUS Region 4. We can get replacements and, and repairs done to all of the equipment. The exposure that the town has is, we have to include them as assets on our, on our insurance for insurance purposes, and for where the town, those four things are such minor in value, it doesn't impact our premiums in any way, shape, or form. So, we've been very fortunate in having direct access for these. We use them a lot for our events, we use them a lot for voting purposes. So, it's been very beneficial to have them right here in the community, and when emergency does arise, as a host community, we get like first prior, first dibs on it. So, it's been very, very helpful to have. So, this is, every year, they say that we're only going to have to do this one more time, and then they're going to use the blanket resolution that they gave us the previous year, and every year, they change a word in the blanket resolution and say, you need to adopt a new one, right? So, here we are, requesting adopting another one. And the resolution is specifically in their format.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Mr. Grandowski?
So, we are part of the Southeast Council of Governments?
We're not part of the Southeast Council of Governments, but the Southeast Council of Governments is the one that DEMUS Region 4 uses to oversee this program.
Okay, all right.
So, that's why we have to send everything to the, to CCOG.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Mr. Grandowski, could you start, please?
Conservation didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Wayhead?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
I missed agriculture because of the caucus, and then wastewater was here last time. I think the only thing that we didn't cover, and we covered at the meeting, was they did get that problem back online. They, they got that back online.
Thank you. Mr. Cattula?
The permanent building committee had a site walk last Wednesday of the KMS construction. It was, we got to see all the concrete footings that report and being backfilled, and the underground utilities being put in, and the drainage, and the steel should be coming in for the structure by middle of the month to start putting steel in.
Thank you. Ms. George?
Last week's BOE meeting, they signed an MO, they voted to sign the MOU with CHR for the mental health clinic, and I forgot my notes, so I don't really remember mine. That was the main thing.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
Economic Development was last week. Parks Rec is in another week. They're going to be recognizing their volunteers. So, that's always good. It's always good. I mean, they, I have to say, the amount of volunteers they have, the amount of volunteers we have in this town in general is spectacular, and we're a very fortunate community to have people that are so willing to help. Economic Development was very, very, I love going to Economic Development because it's so uplifting, listening to, these are business people that are in the business, and a lot of them are real estate, and they're, they're in the know, and they're hearing things, and there's, they were super excited about our road projects, for our five-year road project, which is going to improve our roads, which is going to encourage businesses that want to come back, come into our Killingley. And there's, there's actually rumblings, rumors, people talking about coming to Killingley because it's a good place to be, because it's, it's situated in a really great place, which be. Because it's, it's situated in a really great place, which, as a history, history buff, the Industrial Revolution started here. The first patent issue of woman was here. We're centrally located. In two hours, you can be to Boston, New York, Springfield, Providence, Harford. It's, it's a great location to be in. We got a great grand list. We have a solid community. And for a business, this is a really great place to be. And the guys that are doing real estate are seeing it and they're hearing it. And come June, the regional real estate agents are going to be here. And they're going to be walking 140 Main Street, which should be really pretty close to being done at that point, hopefully. And there's a lot of good stuff happening. So, and the Brickyard should be moving along. And so there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of good stuff coming down the pike.
Thank you.
Even though the state stinks, but Killingley's, Killingley's, Killingley's making up for it, so.
Ms. Barclay?
The Housing Authority meeting was changed to a day that I was working, so I was unable to attend. From the Planning and Zoning meeting on April 17, they had the planning meeting. They're continuing to draft regulations on a business park, which is being reviewed by the attorney. And they're going over definitions from the regular meeting. New business, the state changed the number of cannabis establishments that can be in towns. And Killingley can now have two. So there was an application for cannabis establishment and a manufacturing of some edible products that would be located in the built, empty building next to Big Y and 70 War Regan Road. And there will be an action hearing on May 15. Zone text changed there for wedding event venue, development in low-density zones. And they have an application by Michael Shabrnas and Jessica O'Brien. And that'll be held on June 19. And it's located on 101 in, in, on an old farm. And that's it.
Thank you. Inland Wetlands Water Course did have a meeting last Monday, but we had our annual town meeting and I was unable to attend. Seeing that we're done with that, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 17A, executive session for a conveyance of easement. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session with the town council, the town manager.
I would also recommend the town attorney, Rich Roberts, as well as the recreation director, Bucky Lobush, economic development director, Jill St. Clear, and I, as well as the developer.
Okay. I will...
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion. All is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We'll now move into executive session. It is currently 8:06 PM.
Yep.
Yes.